Good evening. Before I call the meeting to order, I have some remarks I wish to make. As everyone knows, today's the 75th anniversary of D-Day. I just want to give you some facts that maybe you don't know. It was, had a code name, and it was Operation Neptune. And I've, I never knew that until today when I did some research. And we all know that Omaha Beach was the most well-known of the normative invasion sites. But those of you here today and those of you watching at home on television, did you know that the beaches were actually broken up into five segments? But we mostly only hear about Omaha Beach. The other segments were called Utah, Juneau, Sword, and Gold. I know, I thought you all might like to know that. The other thing I wanted to share that was really, really hard for me to digest, although I kind of knew it. The total loss of life for both sides was at least 425,000 people. And we always hear about the losses on our side, but there's always two sides. A lot of our young men drowned before they even made it to the beach. I think the reason that I wanted to do this tonight, we must never forget. Our society is altering in ways that have become alien. And I want to honor all these wonderful young men. A lot of them were 18 and 19 years old. And there were some who lied about their age. And they were 16 and 17. I'm so proud of all of those who were brave, who were scared, and they still worked their way to those beaches. And we in America today have a very different life than we would have had. So could we once again, can I say, we must never forget? And would you join me in just a moment of respect? Thank you for indulging me. And I've done this before, I call the meeting to order so that the rest of them can't get in trouble. Now I'll officially call the meeting to order, and I will request the roll call.
Vice Mayor and I.
Definitely here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
President.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
President.
We have a quorum.
And we're right on to item three. And I was at a NACOG meeting up in Flag today. And I want you all to know, I was at an economic development meeting, and they honored this council. And it was noted what was on our agenda today and what we were going to be talking about. And I was asked to thank you all. Hi, Norm.
Well, good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. Yes, we have a longstanding relationship with NACOG on all kinds of economic fronts. But the one I'm going to talk about tonight is our longstanding voucher transit system, our partnership with NACOG. And it has gone on for, I believe, 18 years, much longer than I can recall. But the records do show that. But that's the wonderful part about it. The system works very, very well for some of that transit community as they qualify through NACOG. They charge a 50% administration fee, but they administrate the whole thing throughout the year. We don't hear much about it. The nice thing, though, is that, I think council may recall, if you look on your council action, that back before the economic downturn years ago, we used to get state funding that we used to match. But that went away in the downturn, and it has not come back in the last five or six years, unfortunately. So this council has elected every year to continue the sustainable funding of $50,000 a year, which goes to fund the program. And it's kept it sustainable and very much well-received by the community out there that needs to use this voucher transit for rides to basic services, medical appointments, and the like. So I do like to point out, too, you see the overhead? This is the Public Works website that points the information that people can gather. In addition, we always have the hard copy available in a brochure form at all our kiosks here at the town, in addition to the library. And I know NACOG has some available, too, when people come in for services. So Leah Sikavich is here tonight, too, to give us an update on the ridership for this current years program, which is always nice. I don't know if I explained to council, I come to you this time every year where the tentative budget approved on May 23rd. We're starting to look at our annual contract renewals so that we get everything in place, a contract signed, so that when we hit July 1st, new budget year, new money, there's seamless transition between services. So that's very important. So that's why we come to you in late June with all these annual contracts with the tentative budget to make sure everything's in place, if everything goes as always planned and no seamless services. One thing I, last thing I want to point out, next slide. We talked about their voucher transit system being a longstanding program. I do want to point out that the Central Yavapai Metro and Planning Organization, we're currently involved in a implementation plan, regional transit implementation plan. And this is funded with the federal dollars that we get for federal planning dollars. And Nelson Nygaard was selected here, I think, four months ago. And the current study is underway, they're taking public comment. We've had a couple stakeholder meetings. All the transit advocates are on the list. And we had a houseful here last week for our checkpoint meeting and one of the stakeholder meetings. So lots of involvement by the transit advocates to make sure we shape this study. The real pleased with our professional consultant, Nelson Nygaard. They took the 10-year study as, you know, a tune-up and background, but they only get up-to-date standard. You know, a 10-year-old study, it's nice to get it up-to-date with current costs. In addition, the community's changed a little bit. So those particular changes can be incorporated into the plan. What we really hope for is we're looking at the full scope, being what that regional system could be, in addition to who's going to run the system, and looking for a new sustainable funding source if transit advocates want to approach and get elected bodies behind a funding source. So that's underway right now. It's about a third of the way through, and we anticipate a final report here at the end of the year. So I just want to make sure that, yes, this is a continued transit effort if we're going to expand services, but part of what's available. And we do seek public input, and we always like to point that out. The CYNPO website, in addition to town website, has the capability for the transit advocate out there to comment on the current study. And I know it was in this month's June Town News with a link that any advocate or member of the community can comment on the study, which is very important. These are public studies. What's important about any public study is that we get input to help shape the study for our constituents for what they want to run. That's my presentation. I'd like to call it Leah Sikavich with NACOG. And she talked about ridership for our current years program with the same funding level.
Welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Leah Sikavich. I'm Operations Manager for NACOG Economic and Workforce Division. And I'm very pleased to present you an overview of the fiscal year July 18 through June 19, overview of our voucher transit system. And I know Norm's got me ready to go here. Thank you, Norm. Okay. So first, to take a look at our current providers that we have to offer, there are currently five. As you see, First Class Taxi is the one that seems to be utilized by the most individuals. I'm, my assumption is that the response time and their availability is probably maybe a little bit expedient versus the others. Currently, we've reached 5,038 rides so far, and counting because June is not yet over. We currently provide an average of 500 rides per month, and that is one-way trips. We do have around 130 individuals that take advantage of this service each month. And, you know, it's definitely an important service to this community, as Vice Mayor pointed out. This is the only community in this area that provides this service, and it's most appreciated by your community. The top three services that individuals are looking for with using the voucher program is basic needs, so going to the grocery store if they have to run by the pharmacy and get pharmaceuticals that they may need. Also, medical appointments, going to the doctor, going to the dentist, as well as employment and job search. And you'll see the graph above, it's just kind of a breakout of that to kind of give you a little bit better of a picture. But definitely, the basic needs is the highest utilized. We also have a graph just to kind of give you an idea of how many rides actually are requested versus rides received, just to give you an understanding that this is a continual service that is in dire need for the area. And with that, on behalf of our Regional Director, Terry Drew, we definitely appreciate the opportunity to provide this information and partner with you on an annual basis, as Norm said, over 18 years and counting. And it's definitely been a vital, vital role for so many in your community.
It's just another way that we show the respect for our families. We, we just wish it was more like it used to be.
Yeah.
And, you know, I would just like to say that when I first became a councilwoman, I remember the program that Norm was referring to was, I think it was actually in the last year of my first year of doing this. So we've been doing this program and working through this, and it's absolutely a wonderful program. And again, these communities that we live in, if we don't partner together and work together, things don't work as well. It's important for us to come together for the betterment of the whole communities at large. And work together and be a good, strong, stable forefront for them. And I do want to let you know that I had a neighbor last Saturday who was taken on a 911 call to the hospital. And, you know, your voucher program is what was used to get her back to her house. And so, you know, we live in a community where we're right in it, and we see it, and we feel it.
That's right.
You know? And that's what's so amazing. We're not distant from these people.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a comment question, more question than comment, anyway. It's a great program, and I totally am happy that we have it in our community. And I realize that if we gave 100,000, it probably still wouldn't be enough.
There's always going to be that need, yes.
But, okay, in your, in your presentation, you said that there are 130 users that are regular users per month. How much does it cost them per month now because of the vouchers? And how much would it cost them if we didn't have the voucher program?
Oh, my goodness. Well, with using the voucher program, they're usually out of pocket about $2 with the voucher program in place currently.
Is that per ride?
Yes.
Okay.
However, if you take a look at utilizing a regular taxi service without that voucher program or using an Uber or a Lyft service, typically, it's from probably a five-mile radius drive, you're looking at at least $15 to $20 per ride, you know, one way. So it's, it's quite a...
I mean, it's important to know those numbers for the simple reason we have a lot of people in the community that are, I mean, if you're on Social Security and you're at the bottom, I mean, you're getting $1,100 a month, and that doesn't go very far. And if you could save, and if they have five appointments, you know, in the month, you're saving them close to $100, easy.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, it's really important for this program to, to grow and prosper in some way. I wish we could do that.
Right. And I would say that the majority of folks are definitely on a fixed income or no income. So that really makes a huge impact on their life. As that last slide says, it really makes them have the opportunity to even go and see a doctor for care.
My understanding is that we can't even meet the full need here. Is that still the case?
Yes. There's, there's always quite a few individuals that contact us. And we do it as a first-come, first-served basis. Every month, there's a time for them to contact us so that we can get them on the list and make sure that we get those sent out to them.
The other comment, and it's only a comment. Of course, we're all out in the community a lot. And I consistently find out that there's people that need it and don't know about it. And I know how hard you, and all the efforts you make to get the information out. But if there's any new way to look at this, where we can get that information out there in a broader sense, I, I know how difficult it is. And I want to commend you for the quality of work I know you're doing. But if there's a new avenue to explain and disseminate the information on this program, please don't hesitate to give it a try.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right.
And we definitely will.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Before, here's the fun things coming up. Discussion, Granville Park Facility Naming. And I was, on my ride to Flagstaff this morning, I heard over and over on the radio, Brian, that this was coming up tonight. And they were very proudly talking about how many people participated. But I won't tell that because that's your job.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. Good evening. Tonight, we have an item that we've referred to over the course of the last three years as Granville Unit 6 Park. What the heck is that, right? So we began several months ago, or a couple of months ago, a process of review, finding a variety of different names, not only looking at the historical, but also the geographical context of our site. And came up with a whole list of names. Those were narrowed down and then put forward in a survey. And to your point, over the course of a seven-day period for social media survey, we had 660 responses.
Isn't that great?
It is totally great. And through that, it was very surprising that the percentage of voting for the top two was 41.3% against 40.4%. So pretty exciting in regards to the balance of the vote and how folks were looking at that.
Yeah, it's the other suggesting names.
Yes. Well, we had a total of three, and those were Santa Fe Station. And that was our 41.3%. Summit View at the 40.4%. And then Granville at 18%. So that is how our votes cast, and those were the names that were made available on that ballot, so.
I like that we're going to have a unique.
Very much so.
Etchy name, and people aren't going to get it, and I love it because they'll ask questions then.
Right. And for those that may not be aware of the fact, i.e. Santa Fe Loop Road that we have right there at Granville, it's again that connective fabric, and that goes back in time when the Santa Fe Station Railroad ran through this particular area, i.e. adjacent to Iron King Trail that we have, doing those things, which connects into the peavine. So a lot of good history element there, bringing that forward in the name of the park. This information was brought forth to the Parks and Recreation Commission. They're your volunteer body that kind of reviews and goes through these processes. And they have recommended in a six-to-zero vote for Santa Fe Station for your consideration. So with that, I'm happy to answer any more questions you have.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Do we have an idea when it's going to open?
Well, we are still under development. We've got a couple of projects that are under construction. Actually, staff has been hard at work getting the site prepared and ready for our pickleball crews coming in tomorrow. And then on Monday, our playground folks, and then immediately following that, will be our, some of our sidewalk work. One of the upcoming bid projects that you'll see will be our turf irrigation system that will be brought forward in the next fiscal year. So we're just going to keep adding legs to it, hoping that once all of our sidewalk work is done, that, and all of the other amenities, we've got some restroom work, some Ramada work that still has to be done. So we'd like to open it up as soon as possible as well. So, but right now, I do not have a, a strong date for you. Would hope and anticipate late fall, but there are a few elements that are out of our control right now.
While we have this chance, why don't you tout a little bit of the ADA aspect?
Yes.
Because that's a point of pride for this whole community.
Definitely. On our image that I have in front of you this evening, you'll see a rather large gray box. And I apologize, let me see if I can mess with it at all. I may not be able to. There we go. Now that large gray box is a nice orange box. We'll be able to take a quick peek at that.
It's easier to see, thank you.
It does help a little bit. So our entire site is going to be ADA accessible. What that means is, is those that have impairments in regards to mobility issues will be able to get through the park site quite well coming from our parking lot. We have our ramps, we have truncated domes, though, for our visually impaired folks to give them that warning of that transition and entryway and egress. Lot of sidewalk, but one of the most exciting elements in there, and i.e. the highlight of the big orange box, that is our new playground location that we have coming in. That is going to be the town's first inclusive playground. And what that means is all abilities, all walks, all activity will be inclusive to everyone. And so, one of the, what I take great pride in is there's a communication board right as you enter into the playground area, or there will be. And that communication board allows folks to point at pictures and have a conversation. So, get to the park, I'm thirsty, need something? Okay, let's talk about the water fountain, let's go. Or I need to go to the restroom, let's go. Or I want to go down the slide with you, let's go. And that board will allow those communications to take place. And of course, the bummer part is, is with all that fun, we get tired. So we can point to the board and say, I want to go home, in doing those types of things. So a lot of fun there at the playground site. So that is that inclusive element that we're referring to. We'll also be able to transition directly into the pickleball courts and be able to play there, have a lot of fun, a lot of access that will be made available directly around that Ramada and restroom area. The restroom facilities will be 100% accessible as well. So lots of good stuff coming into this, this place.
Yes. Again, it's a, it's a gift of love to our community.
Definitely, definitely.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
And you have the very next item?
I do. But before I leave this one, I do have one quick question. Would you like to continue this conversation at commission's next meeting? Or would you like to have this as a consent item?
What do you all want? I, I mean, it would be simpler to do it on consent.
Most definitely.
I love when we give information. What do you all want to do?
Well, I'm fine with the consent agenda. I mean, the people have voted, and we love that.
Yeah, make it a consent agenda item.
You have your answer, sir.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Our very next item that we have this evening is the Art at the Center Sculpture Program. I find this hard to believe that we're celebrating no less than 15 years of the Art at the Center program. And it's a pretty tremendous program when we look through our collection, who's participated over the years, internationally acclaimed folks. Fact that we've sold pieces out of our, out of our program because it's a displayed program, that's really the baseline of the program, is it encourages artists to participate so their artwork can be shared and expressed via physically or even through our social media processes, website, all of those types of things. Because you can take a tour of our program that we have.
And the town still gets 10% of anything sold?
That is correct. It does. And the purpose of that is for maintenance of our permanent collection. So there is that benefit as well, too. So the Arts and Culture Commission operates that program. There's a subcommittee. They go through a vetting process in regards to the artwork that's submitted in for, on loan, for a year's worth of time. They also review continuing works of art, if artists would like to do so in that fashion. And they also recommend the transitions out of the program, too. But one of their final and more fun components that they get to do, if they find work that they feel meets the criteria and would be interesting and expanding of the collection for the benefit of the community, they in turn make recommendations also to you all as council for consideration of purchasing to add to that permanent collection. They have identified two pieces this year. The first piece is titled as Torque. This is by Dale Andrus. That particular piece was added to our collection on loan. It stands right out front of Yavapai College's entryway, right here at the library grounds. Our second piece is known as Totem 1 by Mr. Gary Slater. That piece is located to the east of this facility, literally right in between Civic Center and the library property. It is a very much a complimentary piece to the Sky Discs that we also have in our permanent collection. So I wanted to bring those two particular items to your attention. Matter of fact, I apologize, I have images here for your review. And unfortunately, I failed. This is a slide from our new entries coming into the collection. Totem 1 is actually there on your left-hand side of the screen. I do not have an image of Torque with me this evening, so I apologize for that.
Our picture's all fuzzy anymore.
Is it? I apologize. So Torque is a coated steel structure. It's about nine foot tall. It's multi-colored. And then Totem next door is a stainless steel copper and glass sculpture. So again, it emulates a lot from the Sky Discs item that we have currently in our collection. These two pieces do work within our fiscal allocations. We have a total of $15,032. Would go towards our Torque piece. The remaining $11,000 would go to Totem within a carryover into the next fiscal year of 2000. These have each been negotiated with the artists. Mr. Slater is accepting of the June and July payment process for his particular piece. But we would be very excited if it was considered for acceptance into the collection. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And would ask the continuing question of, would you like this as a continuing discussion next Thursday? Or would you like this as consent?
Well, I think they all said consent agenda, so.
I can do that.
So I'm not voted, but I agree with them.
Very good. Questions, concerns?
Consent it is.
Consent it is.
Thank you, Brian.
All righty. Y'all have a great evening.
All right. Let's move on to item six. Discussion, Police Department Parking Lot Repaving.
Vice Mayor, Council, the item you have before you is the Police Department Back Parking Lot Rehabilitation. So give you a little back... So, give you a little background. Council may recall, last year at this time, we started rehabbing our asphaltic parking lots here at Civic Center, Library, and over at the Police Department. It's always a game of funding, but council may recall, last year, each parking lot has a different age and maintenance treatment. New Library Parking Lot, basically, we put an asphalt paint on it, rejuvenates the pavement. The middle section, we were able to put a little more heavy-duty slurry seal, and that's due to the age of the pavements. Well, the PD back parking lot's the old, original building out here, and it is, that's not the one. Just to give you a look, that due to funding last year, this current budget year, we have funding in order to do what we call the back parking lot, which is behind the PD building. And you can see the other area that is called the front parking lot, that's actually next year's budget, that's currently out for bid. These particular parking lots, you can see the strips on the areas. What that indicates is this particular pavement is flat, shot. We can't give any more asphalt steroid of any type to rejuvenate it. We've got to remove the asphalt and put in new. So, this is a complete rehab, so a little more expensive for the area you get, but do want council's comments, we do look at economy. This particular back parking lot is a complete replacement, because it's all shot, and even this last winter, really decayed even more. The current project that we've got coming out, about half of it needs to be repaired, and then we're gonna put a slurry seal over the rest of the parking lot and rejuvenate it, and then re-stripe them. So, the current lot that we're talking about, as I say, is the back parking lot, the secured area of the PD building. Likewise, we had a naming campaign in Public Works, and we came up with back parking lot and front parking lot, which is about as wild as we get. So, this illustration demonstrates the back parking lot. You can see the area there. We're coordinating with Police Department. We did take bids on May 20th, and we had great competition, actually had seven bidders, which is very good. And the low bidder is Calvary Paving and Grading at $69,000, and we look forward to, it went within the 72,000 budget. Actually, the Streets Department, due to some of the deterioration in more area that we need to remove, they're gonna get in there next week and remove the parking lot and get it prepped, and then the contractor will come in and just repave it with three inches of asphalt. So, total rehabilitation, 25-year-old pavement, it's time for it to all go, and it'll be a real nice amenity, and we'll get another long-term lifecycle out of this particular pavement. So, right now, we've been in touch with the contractor. He anticipates doing it with favorable council award next week, the last week of June, which takes place this budget year. As I say, the front parking lot's out for bid, and we look forward to bringing that to council after July, and the last couple of weeks of July, if all goes well, we'll do the front parking lot, and all our parking lots by August 1st will be brand-new again and up to date. Any questions I can answer?
Well, I just have a comment, and then I'll make sure they get to ask questions. I just have to say, yay, the tax increase is really working.
Vice Mayor, it's funny you would say that, because that's exactly what I was gonna say, that you know what? You have been so busy for the last few years with parking lots, streets, and everything, your department, and you have done a fabulous job. And you know what? That half a cent has served this community well and will continue. Thank you, Norm. I, you know, I truly know how hard you guys, everywhere I drive right now, Vice Mayor, we got busy stuff going on, right? It's wonderful. It's wonderful.
Yeah, and to, you know, tag on that comment, we, Public Works, we sat at the home show here, you know, for those three days here a couple of weeks ago in May, and, you know, 20,000 people, I understood, came through the door, and we talked to lots of people. There's three of us all day long, and, you know, the feedback we're getting is, you know, favorable. They say, "We understand. If you're going to expect higher service levels, and we're willing to pay for it, here's what you're getting." And I really don't get any negative at all, and they would come to me if they said, "Well, you know, we're taxed enough." It's very favorable, and it's nice to hear that, that council was bold enough in 2016 to put the half-cent sales tax into place for enhanced service levels of asphaltic pavements, and we're delivering that, and residents are saying, "Thank you." And we're in year four, as we've talked about, so we're seeing that enhancement level and the service levels throughout town.
I have to share a little story about you, about this. I've lived there where I am now for 20 years, and there was a neighbor that moved in like, just like a week or two before I did, and boy, he took me to task over this tax increase. Well, this happened about six months ago, and I'm just now remembering to tell you, and I apologize for that. He says, "I, I need to tell you I was wrong." And I said, "What about?" Because he takes me to task so often. And he said, "I like how the roads are shaking up, so I apologize for getting to tell you." So, tell your team people are noticing and are appreciating.
Thank you, that, I'll take that back to them.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
Bring it next week for.
We need it brought back. And you're just gonna stay right there, aren't you?
Yes, I am. Vice Mayor, Council, the next time we have before you.
Day of the show.
That's okay with me. No, I do like to bring forward all of the service contracts we have throughout the year. This is about the only time that I do get to mention throughout the year, we've got great working relations with all our outsourced vendors. What you have before you currently is our annual service contracts, and there's many listed there, and I'd like to go through each one, just to explain the service level, what that current status of contract is, and/or if we had to either send it out for rebid, and why we rebid it. So, take the first one, we do outsource for our fuel service for all our town vehicles. We spend about $200,000 a year, and we had a discussion with the current vendor, although their names, they were sold, but their name changed. Diesel Direct West does a very good job for us with the card lock system, and they're gonna renew their contract and provide great service again, and that's the second year of the contract. Second one you have in your council action is mowing services. I think council, where we do have a fleet of three mowers in Public Works, but we do a lot of mowing here in Prescott Valley, and we do outsource certain areas, the Highway 69 right-of-way is one, and some of our bigger rights-of-way, in addition to some private lots. We spend about $40,000 a year on mowing through this outsourced service, so.
Norm, let me stop you a minute. Driving around, I see how soon everything is green. Are we gonna need a bigger budget for mowing? Because we've never had this much this early, thanks to the wet winter we had.
Never been this green this early.
And I'm concerned about how that's impacting your budget.
Um, we do hit them three times a year, and most, it's four times, you know, twice in the spring and twice in the fall. So, I think we have a pretty good handle on it.
We're okay.
We do see now, actually, just got in touch with Streets last week, with our three in-house mowers, we've hit all the rights-of-way just about throughout town. We start to get a die-off here in June when it dries up, so yes, we've had increased growth. That'll start up again about mid-July, but I'd like to think we're, yeah, it's been a little greener longer, but I think the service level's maintained. I don't anticipate much, much more service level that's really gonna be noticeable that we can't handle in-house with a little more extra effort. In addition to snow, yeah, we plowed a little more snow, had a little more cost, but it's all part of some of the service level extras we do that's still within reason of all the services provided.
Part of what you're reporting on, of course, is funds for weed control. How about our paths? Because our path along Lakeshore really has the weeds growing up, and I'd get run out of the neighborhood if I didn't ask. I know that's on a cycle, right?
It is.
And it may be due for?
We do one late April, early May, and then we should have gotten to that. In fact, I talked with in-house staff, and we're on one more rotation on, I think, Lakeshore, and that probably done in the next week, and then.
Yeah.
Highway 69, we hit a little more often, about six times a year.
Yeah, I had a call yesterday from a neighbor, and I reassured them that it's a schedule, and if they'll just be a little patient, and I said, "Stomp on the darn things." He didn't laugh.
So, the mowing service that I'm on, of course, I think council's well aware, you're seeing some of the Public Works contracts we're bidding, same unit items and services. We're seeing labor and costs, in addition to some commodities increase, in addition to asphalt, anywhere from 10% to 20%. The particular vendor here did ask for 2% increase to cover some of those costs. We think it's very reasonable, it's within the contract renewal, so it's our recommendation that we increase their service level contract by 2%. Moving on to street striping, we spend about $55,000 a year on street striping. Takes about three weeks a year for the particular vendor to do the work townwide. We've got a long-term relationship with Traffic Safety, they're a local Prescott Valley striping firm, and they've actually are going to renew with no cost increase. Got a great relationship with them, and they've just elected to just turn it over and do it again this coming budget year. In addition to landscape and weed services, Councilwoman, now you did mention that, landscaping, we do, this is a split contract, of course, it's about $250,000. If I recall, I think we spent about $58,000 to $60,000 of actually killing off stuff that grows, so that's your weed abatement that we do in some of the medians, and some of the curb returns on some of our signals. So, kill and escape, long-term relationship again, and they actually want to renew their contract with no cost increase.
I have a curiosity question, because the person called, I went down there yesterday and walked it a little bit and checked it out. Do we have separate budgets, like for weed control and crack repair? Are they separate?
We do.
How do we manage that?
We do.
Okay.
So, actually, we would like to think we don't have any weeds in our particular rights-of-way, because that, you know, is an indication that we're getting behind on some of the maintenance.
Yeah, because on that particular path, you know, it's cracking and the weeds are growing up and.
Which particular path?
It's the one along Lakeshore, east of Navajo.
Right. That is one that is in need of rehabilitation. Actually, we have it in our five-year capital budget.
And they pointed that out to me, and another curiosity question, since I had this particular person talk to me, you know, that path never got completed. Wherein our plan is to complete that the rest of the way down.
We do have it in the five-year capital improvement program, so it's in and out year, I think it's out year three right now.
So, I can look them in the eye and say, "It's gonna happen."
It's in the current budget, and obviously, they work in the current next year, so we like to make sure that we do have it on the radar screen, so to speak, but that'll be for council consideration during the budget process, whether or not it'll be funded as a capital improvement project.
Okay. Thank you, Norm.
I got a question.
I'm taking advantage of you, and I apologize. Go ahead, Marty.
On the weed abatement or whatever, okay, I've had people question me about it, plus I've noticed it myself, and one of the examples is right up Viewpoint, okay? You have that really deep drainage ditch, and in a couple of places, you have, I would call them trees, I mean, they're growing, you know, they're eight to 10 feet tall in the middle of, whose responsibility is that? Is that ours? Of course, sometimes it's on the.
Volunteer elm trees.
Is that what they are?
Yes.
Okay. But they're still in the middle of the drainage ditch.
That's Mother Nature's fault.
Good question. Whose responsibility is it?
There is no responsibility to tear them down, and we would end up getting beat up if we did, because you've got trees. And where do trees like to grow? Where there's water. And so, until it begins to obstruct the drainage, case in point, right below the dam at Mountain Valley Park, you've got a small forest there, and most of it's in the drainage way, and all of it's in the floodplain. And if we went in and cut down all of those trees that are not obstructing the water, okay, the few times that it goes over the dam, if we went down and cut those down tomorrow, you would be filleted for getting rid of that volunteer forest. They're locust and elm wild.
How about those of us that don't want them sucking up so much of our water, sir? It's, I'm sorry, it's ying and yang.
Moving on to some of the rebids we had to do, I think, I point out to council that the five-year contracts can renew up to five times if we are successful with renegotiating a renewal, but there does come that every five years, we do have to send out projects for bid. That's, relates me to the next one, the janitorial contract was actually up on its five-year cycle, we had to rebid it. And the nice thing was with, of course, with the PD expansion of 12,000 square feet, in addition to library, we're open six days a week now, so we've enhanced that service cleaning one more day a week. So, with those service level enhancements, those are put into the new contract renewal. We did send it out for bids, and, you know, tuned up the old contract, and we did take bids, and the low bidder was actually a new particular contractor. As you see, Clean Team Janitorial there, they've had the contract for, I believe, 16 years on the five-year renewals. They were beat by another contractor, and you can see the bid results there. So, there are times that we have to rebid every five years, and that's the confidence we get with our residents, that we do look for the people out there that provide the best service level minimums for the contract language for the price. So, this is a good example of, we're going to change janitorial companies after many, many, many years, and we're very confident that this new firm will do the same, a good job, and that's what our job is, to make sure they meet the minimum contract requirements. So, it would be our recommendation that we would recommend to the naturally OCD cleaning services for the janitorial services, starting the new budget year. Clean Team will finish out till June 30th, so you can see, that's a new vendor. Moving on, if I could, the last one I wanted to call council's attention to was street sweeping. The, actually, the vendor we had was in their second year of their contract. They could have renewed for a third year if it was within the contract requirements, and we made a decision with the vendor that we were going to separate a relationship and resend it out for bid. So, there's a good example of, the option was there, and we decided to part ways. So, we sent it out for bid, and we got two new contractors to bid, and you can see the results there, very, very good competition in it, just like the janitorial. You can see very good competition, so we're confident that the current service level provide, which is four sweepings a year for all the curbed areas of Prescott Valley, you can see that particular, the unit item we bid is $61.95 per lane mile. We spent about $55,000 a year to sweep our streets four times a year, all the curbed areas. So, those are our annual service contracts. As we talked about, summer renewals, some little increases that can be renewed, and of course, the two absolutely new contracts that is a part of the contractual obligation we have are up for our renewal, starting, and I do want to point out, I think I mentioned, this would be the new contract renewals for July 1st for the new budget year, and as we talked about, if we do award next week, that provides seamless service with the new budget year kicking in. Be happy to answer your questions this time.
I got a question regarding the, the street sweeping. After a heavy snow like we had not that long ago, and we have to put down some of the stone on the road to make the grip and traction better, the company that does the street sweeping, are they required to come out within a day or two after everything melts to clean that up so that it doesn't kick up and start breaking glass?
We do, and that's our discretion to use. Do we desire that service level? In the big snowstorm we had this late February, yes. We paid extra, if I'm mistaken, we paid an extra $5,000 this year through a couple individual sweepings in certain areas to clean up those, the extra centers we put down for that significant snow.
Is that something that they automatically do, or is that triggered by a phone call from you?
No, it's triggered by a phone call. So, they won't provide service unless they have a contract. So, we call them, we actually have an hourly rate, and same hourly rate, I think it's $300 an hour, so we can tell them, you know, typically, we'll go do major, some of the major intersections, especially the bridges, the Stone Ridge Hill, so to speak, that 8% grade, we really have to load that one up, so we can actually apply, you know, good discretion about where we expend any dollars that's, you know, very reasonable to say, "Yeah, just go hit the Stone Ridge Hill." And a lot of areas we have, they're just taken care of with a routine quarterly sweeping. So, the sweeping that we do typically towards the end of February, it's pretty heavy sweeping, and that's where we can get into some challenges with our vendor to say, "Well, that's just routine cleanup and the like, and that's part of what we do, is use our judgment to say, yes, we need to pay a little extra."
All right, thank you.
And of course, in the years that we don't get much snow, and it melts by noon, and it's lovely for the first few hours, there's really no service needed, nor do we pay for it either.
Yeah, well, you know, you have to contract for it and pay for it, and if we need it, we need it. If we don't, good for us, sort of.
The other thing that's important to note, which is kind of a little sidebar, but this is part of our municipal stormwater management system, which is under permit from the Department of Environmental Quality when you have the, you know, stormwater permit obligations. So, just this last week, Ron Pine in our office, our Engineering Division Manager, got our permit renewed, and he's one of the first small municipalities to meet the permit criteria, which it's a good process, but you do have to tailor it to their needs, and so we were permitted, and that's all part of keeping the environment safe. So, this does have that, not only, you know, the aesthetic appeal, but it is, you know, very much, you know, requirement for, for the environment to just sweep up some of the sediments. So, there's a little more to it at times. That's part of our, not as, I guess, well-publicized what we do, but part of what we do here is environmental.
You never get bored, do you, Norm?
We have a lot of fun and do a lot of different services, and that's what's nice to bring in, is, you know, each one of these, we do tie it in, so there's some ancillary reasons why we do what we do, you know, for, for our residents and the environment.
Norm, I just want to thank you very much for being conservative, looking for the best conservative, you know, service, and getting, using the taxpayer dollars wisely. I really appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, we'll ask Norm to move on to our last agenda item. Discussion and materials.
Done with Norm night yet, so. Next item is, these are annual rebid material contracts, as stated in the council action. This keeps us more attentive to the commodities market. This keeps us more attentive to the commodities market, which, you know, in the Streets Department, we do buy a lot of particular commodities in order to, I don't have my right agenda item, for the materials we need to buy to maintain our streets. So, first one, and I do have several items, I'd like to talk through a few of them just for Counsel's background, and why we do what we do, and how much we spend per year. The first one is roadway material. As you can see, this is the asphalt products we buy to maintain streets, patch potholes, and we buy in different quantities throughout the year, whether we have to buy a cold mix to fix localized potholes before we can put a permanent hot patch in. We're able to have good competition between two local suppliers, who are, in my opinion, very fortunate, and, you know, kind of anomaly of small communities like we have, that we've got competition between two suppliers here locally. We actually get a very good price, which does save us money in. So, both of our local material suppliers do compete, and we do have the opportunity that if one particular supplier isn't able, because they're running a different mix, then we have a price from the other vendor, we actually award to both, so we have a right of refusal if one of the material companies is running a different mix that day, we can go to the second one. So, we're able to stay more fluid, and actually, it helps with our work plan. So, this is the asphalt products we buy, in addition to, as you see, the base material that goes underneath the asphalt. All of these are materials we're able to pick up on demand from each material supplier and have that competitively bid price, and both material suppliers do a very good job of supplying us, of the quantities we need, in addition to our contracting community when they do capital projects for us and the like. Which leads me, if I could, to talk about the asphalt paving project. I talked about this, and we talked here a couple of weeks ago about our pavement enhancement program. This is a big item, if you look at the award there, that's dug on near a million dollars. We talked about, that might be worth mentioning, we talked about our annual program that we, you know, basically split the $2 million a year enhancement of $1 million in chip seal and that pre-chip maintenance, that, you know, pavement service level enhancement we do. This is the item that we, we use with the local contract community to restore those edges, if you recall some of the slides, restore the edges, patch local, local potholes. That's what gives that service level upgrade, and that really takes a lot of the expertise of our contract community, in addition to our streets community, to do just what it takes to get it there. It's different, you know, just about every street. This is a significant item, as you can see, we had very, very good competition here, and that gives us confidence that this is the best price we can get to work for. As you can see, Earth Resources Corporation, they're a local, you know, civil construction firm, and they do very good work for us, we're happy to have them as the low bidder, and they'll, this will be their third year providing the pavement maintenance for us, so you can see the great competition we have there. I did, I'd like to point out, I looked at the unit items last year, same product, just re-up, you know, current commodities prices, this particular price has gone up about 10%. And that can, just a function of higher wages in addition to higher asphalt prices. So, nice thing is, they do the work, and they get paid for, at the market rate, so it's good to rebid things every year. Next item is the annual concrete, this is what we repair our sidewalks throughout the town, or curb and gutters, or any concrete in our Public Works construction that needs it. In addition, the Parks Department, they've got significant amount of concrete in their facilities, they also use this contract to use our local contracting expertise to help them maintain higher service levels for concrete that has broken or been disturbed and needs to be rehabilitated. Next item, CMP culverts, this has been a minor item, we talked about, even eliminate before we sent it out for bid, we spent about $2,500. We've kind of discovered that it's not worth bidding out to the contract community, we can still buy culvert pipes, so we'll drop that from the annual contracts. We used to buy a lot of culvert pipe, but kind of caught up now with that particular effort. Solid waste disposal, think Counsel's aware that all of our dumpsters at all of our park sites, in addition to our town buildings, we do outsource that particular function. If you notice, we only got one bid, I did look at the particular results, and Waste Management did have it last year. Last year, we had two other vendors, being Patriot and Best Pick bid, we did query them to turn in a bid, and they chose not to, but I think they felt like it wasn't worth it, they thought Waste Management would get it. Waste Management's only 2% higher than their bid last year, so I'm really confident that, yes, it's right in tune with what you would expect, so even though there wasn't a second bidder, it's well within reason for what we've been expecting for cost. The service level hasn't changed, just the same amount of work. And the last one, to the portable toilets, similarly, Patriot Disposal was the only bidder last year, but they bid the same price, so we were happy last year, we'll be happy this year at the same bid prices. So, good level of confidence that each one of these particular items that I presented to you is a very good market rate, plus in addition, all our vendors are, perform very well for us, and it's nice to have those long-term relationships. At times, we have as good a relationships with our contract community as we do with our own internal staff, because we work with them a lot, and we do hold their service level quality, but with the workmanship, they're happy to do the work, and they're a good relationship, and you can see the work in the field.
Norm, I have a curiosity question. Are these particular businesses, will they be affected by the changes in the minimum wage, which then would affect our contracts? Are you preparing for that, or if these particular businesses won't be affected by that?
Well, they're well, well aware of it, whether the minimum wage affects them directly, they feel like need increase, you saw that swept away, that was their letter of substantiation, why they felt like need increase, was minimum wage, they're very labor-intensive with that particular, let's call it wage bracket, so they felt like needed increase. Some of the other vendors, I think they look at too, yeah, there's some extra costs, but, you know, with no increases, they really enjoy the working relationship. As I say, we've had such long-term relationships, there's not a lot of time spent administration. They do the work with Pam, it's well-done, and, you know, it's, you know, the term boots on the ground or service level provided, they do a good job, and they feel like, yes, with the town, you know, we're, with people in place in Public Works for many years, you know, our office administration people, in addition to our finance department, the word's out in the community, we pay very expeditiously, and that's appreciated. And they say, you know, if they can get paid, there's a lot to be said, that a lot of those overhead costs, they can cut down on, they said, "Yes, we do the work for the town, they pay us right away, per competitively bid contract, so we're open and, you know, transparent to everyone," and, but to the point, yes, they're aware of those costs, and they would have put those in there if they really felt like they needed to have them.
One of the reasons I ask beyond concerns for our own contract negotiation is because I'm a representative to NACOG, I'm really aware of how this has affected flag staff. And they're, they're in a world of hurt up there in some of their businesses, and it was kind of sad at the meeting I had today, when I found out how seriously affected they are, so I'm glad to hear that.
Well, I think they're well aware of the, the schedules of when the minimum wage would kick in, so that's what's nice about renewing the contracts each year, so that we do know that they're confident the prices they give us at, you know, competitive bid prices, that they said, "Yes, we can do the work, and we, we know what's coming for us, and we're going to do the work for that price, and do a good job at it, too."
Oh, I never doubted that you had calculated that issue in, but I just, after what happened in the meeting today, I just wanted to hear it.
But as, as I mentioned, it's nice just to renew those relationships and contracts to say, "Yes, that's the current market that you need to pay for and expect."
Well, thank you, we of course want this all to come back.
You know, as I just, you want to mention in closing, the nice thing about getting our budget done in time, it makes our job very easy with our vendors, that it's seamless, they know they're going to get, we can pay them on time when we all do our jobs, the hard work, so to speak, of getting budgets approved, anticipating that new world comes July 1st to say, you know, we close out the old budget, but seamless service to say, "Yes, it's changed in the finance world or the budget world, but the service in the field continues on, and that's what we're after." Anything else?
Unless you have questions or comments for Norm? The meeting is adjourned.